Do you have Ed Ness, so she can hear now?
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm so incredibly excited to kick off our kind of our first work meeting in this style. I'm I'm just really looking forward to seeing how this might, you know, transform a little bit, how we continue to do business, and particularly how the board is just staying more connected to and we want to be more, everyone's really excited to be here and kick this off. So if you just call us, we know where. I'd love to, in a really quick amount of time, but I'd love to just go around actually to everybody, and we have the goal called that way. Just to name it from the recording, we do have all board members present. Three of us are in person and one is online. But again, I'd love to go around the table and just have everybody introduce themselves, so we have new faces. So I'll start. My name's Cardi Hoover. I use Native American pronouns and I'm the Director of District One.
Yeah, Erin Verona, HR Labor Relations for the Public Street.
Jan Ramon, I'm the new Director of Special Education here.
Jeff Baker, Detective Director, CTE Babe and Penalty Services.
Veronica Britson, Chief Financial Officer.
Dennis McWayne, Senior Student Representative.
Alex Houston, June, Student Representative.
Jan Boad, Director of District Two.
Christopher, Principal, St. Walt's Middle School.
Allison Dill, Executive Director, Normal League One, TK-12 Education.
Dr. T. Franklin, Department of Education.
Dr. Casa Petrosa, Interdepartmental Superintendent.
Scott Witback, Chief Academic Officer.
Amy Larson, Director, District Five.
And on line, we have. Director Morris is now able to chat. One, if you could just introduce yourself really briefly. Director Morris is now able to chat. One, if you could just introduce yourself really briefly.
Director Morris is here. Sorry.
No worries. Thank you. And welcome, Ms. Nor.
Hi, I'm Honeye. And I'm at Sequella and I got caught up in the traffic out here.
Thanks again so much, Gina, and for being here. And welcome to our guests who are joining us online. So we have our first orb in this is to chat about the WASTA General Assembly and the legislative proposals there. So, Director Morris?
So at last meeting, I included the, so later this month in, let's see, twenty-second, WASTA, which is a school director's association, having their general assembly, which is where we get together our own school districts and vote on various proposals for what they call permanent positions, which are kind of value statements and legislative positions, which are specific positions that we're looking to impact the legislature in the next legislative session. So at last, I, there's, you know, forty-eight of them that are being voted on this time. And as I mentioned last time, my intention with the two segments that I indicated last time was to kind of vote along the lines of what the committee, there's other committees that review these and learn from those legislative bodies and come out with a faster, you know, faster recommendation. So I just wanted to have this short time here, if there's any board members who have any particular meetings that, you know, we want to discuss at all in terms of how I should vote. We can do that. Otherwise, I'll just kind of use my judgment on this. As I indicated last time, with the exception of a few of them that I've been voting, mainly along the lines of, one of them was there, there's a position about race inequity policies and WASTA is proposing, one of the parties proposing to take the race out of it and just say equity policy. And as I mentioned, I'm going to argue that we should have race should be kept back in there because we went through that discussion in our district and we adopted our race inequity policy quite a while ago, that we had this, we originally had an equity policy. Students actually concluded to know you didn't have race there, which makes a lot of sense when you think about the history of this country. You can't really talk about equity without talking about race. So anyway, I would argue that and we'll see where that goes. It could be an interesting vote in the state. You can know, body as a whole, because this body represents all one hundred ninety-five school districts in the state, which, and you can imagine, spans the political range of regular legislature, legislature. And so, anyway, so if there's any, any particular ones anybody wants to discuss. The ones of this.
Did you also kind of already for the, I forgot the name, but it was something about increasing for income schools or something like that?
So that, that, so there's a second part to this. So this is kind of voting on a kind of new or modified positions. And then after that, there's another session which I'll bring back as well for us to prioritize things. And that's where that one comes in, because that one's on there already as one on the list. It's not being modified. But when we get to the voting phase of it, then I'll bring back a spreadsheet and we can talk about the different priorities like we did last week.
There's not any one in particular that I, I want to chat about. I appreciate you advocating in those ways for that one. I know the other one that you were really thinking about is the one around local control.
Right.
So maybe we'll see a little bit more to that.
Yeah, so that one's, actually, that one came through the resolutions. That's a value statement one that came through the resolutions committee, which basically, there's been in the, a lot of these have backstories to them. So in the legislature, this last session, there was a proposal to include, make sure that required by law that WBDQ be represent, folks be represented in the curriculum. We always have laws about, you know, making sure that race groups are represented in the curriculum. And so that particular one did not make it through the legislature last time and will, I'm sure, come back again. The arguments within WASTA around that one, there was a lot of arguments that, no, that should be a local control issue, that each school district should be able to decide on their own, things like that. And so my, the one that we put in was to say, and which was, as I say, accepted by the resolution, which was that there are limits on local control and one of these is civil rights. So, you know, it's, it's this, this, when the full thing came out, it was very, very reminiscent for me of civil rights movement in the sixties in the South, where, you know, black folks were wanting to have all the rights of citizenship, voting, sitting in buses, where they, you know, all this, all the stuff that went with citizenship and the, and the, a lot of some states pushed back and say, no, this is state's rights and we get to decide what's going on in that area. And no, you know, for civil rights and things, it needs to be, I want to just include it. So anyway, that's, that's the kind of argument. And I, as I say, I don't think that one, that one sounds like it's going to go through without much discussion. So we'll see.
Out of curiosity, since there are so many other folks sitting around this table, not that you had to, but if you did by chance look at any of these, is there anything that jumped out at you or that you're curious about? More on the board meeting agenda from the last. All right. Great. Well, now we move on to the next piece, which is the strategic plans. I'll pass over to Dr. Petrosa.
Great. Yeah, so I, just to let you know, we're just making sure that we have the correct version here because based on feedback, we dated a few slides. But if there's not, what I'll do is I will fill it in and then we'll update the slide moving forward. So let me check and go to the page. Page nine, which I mean, that's. But that's okay. I'll fill it in. I'll fill it in. Start from the beginning. That's fine. It's good. We'll, we'll work it out. We'll, we'll, we'll explain that again. We'll just go from there. Hi, everybody. And so just one of the things that I noticed in all of our work sections since I came on board in July, and even previously when I was sitting in the board meeting, is that there was a lot of conversation from the board directors and community as well as, okay, you get these reports and we get this information and we're getting the analysis and, and then what? What happens next? So this is not to go through deeply. This is not a deep dive into the data. It's not a deep dive into the analysis. This is to talk through what happens now, right? What, what do the school leaders do with that information? And then how do they start engaging with staff to start thinking about the alignment work that needs to happen? How do they start analyzing data with their school teams? And then how do they think about ways to leverage the work with student voice and parents to really make the school improvement process? Not just a piece of paper, but an actual living, breathing document that is the vision and the vision holder and the strategy holder for the work in schools, right? So that is the process we're beginning as we begin thinking about the strategic plan. And I think it's really critical that you actually hear from the school leaders themselves about how they're thinking about the work. So this is not intended to really go deeply, but they are now, after they had the summer off, right, and teachers are off in the summer, but they're starting to get their data. They're starting to get their information. They got the revised strategic plan just in August. And so they have to start thinking about the work that they're, the work that they're going to be doing with their school teams. So this is that beginning of the work. So on the next slide. I just want to, there's a lot of work and development that's happened in strategic plan designing here. And there've been other entities and groups. So CE has been involved, the Schteckie group, there's been a lot of groups involved. One of the things that I will say is through all of that, there was also engagement that happened as well. So next slide. And this is for the community to know as well. So last year, staff provided feedback on the importance of, I'm just going through this, on the importance. Getting caught up. On the importance of each of the identified areas of the draft plan via survey. And then students also provided feedback on the importance of each identified area by class discussions and paper survey led by the superintendent, Ms., Dr. Herndon, and the Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Borshay. I just want to make sure and honor those, that work that they did because that's the work that we're lifting up today. And then small cabinet took those recommendations from student staff, school leaders, and the board, and then provided edits to this final draft. The board provided many, many editorial questions around the value of qualitative versus quantitative data, talking about the use of street data, making sure that we're really thinking about equity in the work that we're doing. And then the final version is to be incorporated because based on another feedback on targeted focus groups for analysis of students due to behind Black and Latino students specifically. So I just wanted to share that this isn't just a one and done, right? And the document is the continuous improvement document. This is our work that we're going to continue to do and we'll continue to hone in. We also don't want it to get too big, so we want to keep the focus narrow. But we want to make sure that we're really thinking about the students that we're trying to serve in Tepolos for this shirt.
Can you define, when you say the word small cabinet, that's not a word I've heard before?
Oh, that's the senior leaders of the team, which is the team that's sitting right here in this room. All the members that are here. Yeah, it's a central office, senior leadership.
But not including principals?
Including the little principals for part of the feedback sessions. And so we engage with them. So we have a, we include the principals in some of the small cabinet discussions. We're improving that work moving forward. They weren't part of that work in the past, but we're going to bring them into the fold into some meaningful discussions because that is really where the work lives, is in schools and buildings. So we have to do some intentional working together. So we've been actually designing some intentionality with meetings with them, bringing them into the fold. And so we're going to actually have a combined meeting next week to talk about the work we're doing. So.
Can I just clarify on that last one?
Yeah.
Just grammatically, two years behind. There are three groups there, right? Two years behind the Black and Latino. It's not the Black and Latino that are two years behind.
No, it's three different groups.
Thank you.
Which, so, and so two years behind could be any student, that any student could be, any student in Tepolos school district, whatever, however they identify as being two-year, three different focus areas.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great. So moving forward, I'm not going to go through the specifics of the strategic plan, but it's been on the board docs. It's been listed. We've been sharing the high-level information and the actual plan with schools. We shared this slide with our KIGOT so people know what the big four goal areas are in the work. And I'm going to talk a little bit about this. I don't want to go too deep into this. But one of the things that we talked about is, one, making sure that we're highlighting the work that's already happening in the district. One. Two, that we're not bringing on new initiatives or new assessments or new bodies of work. And then three, we think about high expectations also, and that equity is actually part of academics. Anti-racist work is part of academics. And so how do we look at that and how do we build out strategies? So I'm not going to go through this deeply, but I just want to let you know so that we did highlight and think about English, Microtards, and mathematics. And what we're going to be doing is even though we're every grade level case of eight, and actually nine, is taking that assessment and that work throughout the whole system, but we're going to be really thinking about really targeting, what does that look like for all of our students? But if we focus in on the I-R-E-D assessment, that'd be looking at holistically third grade and seventh grade as anchor grades and taking some additional information around that, that we can actually then really push and target because those are anchor grades from second grade to third grade, sixth and seventh grade. There's little predictors around that. But it doesn't mean we're not really looking at every grade level. So I just want to be really clear. We're looking at every grade level, but we're taking an extra look at target at those grade levels and thinking about what we need to do to strengthen the work about that. And that's also based on data. One of the things we noticed that was missing was high school. So there wasn't a lot of information around high school. So you'll see that we actually did target high school into this work. And so one of the things that we incorporated into this was ninth grade on track because there's a lot of research and a lot of evidence that says ninth grade students who are on track with their credit bearing credits for school actually are, is a big predictor of whether or not they graduate. So we put a marker in there for ninth grade on track to make sure that we are working with our counseling team and our high school team to make sure that all our students are getting credit bearing opportunities starting at ninth grade. Because I think we've all learned that there was lots of classes that weren't credit bearing for high school students, which created, we created the conditions where students were not actually being able to graduate, waivers were being filled, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're saying, no, all of our students and our ninth graders need to have all credit bearing opportunities so that they can be on track to graduate to high school.
And that's news to me. I didn't realize we had new classes that weren't credit bearing.
Yeah, and we did. And we're working on making sure that we don't anymore. Yeah, yeah, because we, I would say, for example, some of the elective or newcomers or some foundational pre-work and they weren't credit bearing for the students. So that is something we're, we're working on. We just met with the high school team this morning. They've been working on their master scheduling around that. It is something we are working.
That's great. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
Yeah, the other thing, and this is kind of overall, and I can, you kind of references, but we need to get, kind of get race-based pulled in here. One of the things I know from past years, you know, there was years, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the latest data on this particular one, that, for example, Black students were not, were disproportionately failing ninth grade science, for example. And so that's an area where, you know, that's the kind of thing I'd like to highlight and then focus in. And at the moment, at the time, I'd asked one of our Black students who was actually really good at science, why she thought that was. And she said, you know, very quickly, because there's no role models.
Yeah.
Okay, now that's something we could actually do something about. And so that's why, you know, we're talking about anti-race, a lot of these things.
Yeah.
We need to kind of, and I understand this is a working process, but I just want to emphasize that we need to create a looking for those things and then go into work.
And I think so in future, so this is a high-level look because, you know, it just got approved. We're going to talk about it. So down the road, when we're going to actually do work sessions, breaking down each goal area.
Yeah.
So we're going to have a work session just on relationships. We're going to have one on high expectations and excellence for all, one for equity and empathy. And that is where we will bring out the data and the reporting structures and have race-based conversations around those targeted goals. So I'm sure, I'm going to, I don't have a picture of it. I actually, in my slide, it actually had a glimpse of the data, how we're collecting the information. But yes, race-based data is going to be part of, it was part of the feedback. And so that's something that we're, as a team, looking at. And I want us to focus then on Black students and Latino students specifically. Those are the two targeted areas we're looking at.
And the one other thing is, I know you said that this is going to be coming, but I think, I don't know, these goals, the base, establishing the baseline data is critical. I know the SBA actually just came out, so it just out recently, but we really do need that. The reason I bring that up is, but so often in the past, we've never had baseline data.
Yeah.
And therefore, you never know what you're going to achieve if you don't have a baseline.
So if you look, actually, if you look on, it is written, for example, on track to graduation. So anyway, that is because we actually have the data, right? So they, we will actually have all of this updated in the strategic plan where we will have a baseline goal and then a target. So that is going to happen. If you don't see it, it's because we didn't have the baseline data or enough data to do that. That's the only reason why you don't have it. But this will be updated as we go. But for every time you see that there is a baseline data, we will actually have that. And then the percentage of staff, we added the component about who answered positively on the EES survey in the Eric's High Standards and Expectations. And that actually had the baseline data because we have it at sixty-six percent. We want it to increase to seventy-one percent.
I'm just going to make a comment on that one because I think there was one particular area that was kind of, kind of focusing on and has been an issue for a number of years. This is a question, I think this is, this is, this is a general area that's a quite different question.
Yeah.
One of those, do you believe that our students can achieve, you know, grade level standards? And that one, we were getting like only fifty percent. So that's one where we need to, you know, and I'm hoping, I was hoping that initially CE data that there was some attempt to kind of delve deep into that and figure out, so why is that? I mean, I could imagine a number of reasons why people feel that way. And so, but we need to understand that to get, you know, this one.
Yeah. And we'll have more specific information, but this is high-level, but I wanted to let you, the community to know that if you don't see a baseline data, it's because we don't have the data yet. But we will, and we'll change that and update this. All right, next slide. A H learners. So we actually, one of the things we've talked about, if we make this a growth goal for I-R-E-D, we felt it was important that one hundred percent of our students set goal growths, one hundred percent as a goal. Because I think it's important because one, all of our students should be engaged in their own learning. They should be having conversations with their teachers around the learning and they should actually know where they are and start thinking about growth for themselves. So we thought that was a really important measure. We could have looked at last year's data, but we were like, it's a hundred percent. We want a hundred percent. And actually, it wasn't really a goal before, so this is the target and we're going to be working from there. But that was something the team felt really strongly was critical. And the other, the other one we talked about was student collaboration interests. And so we actually put in there that the percentage of fourth to twelfth grade students responding positively on the EA survey in the areas of collaboration or personal skills. As we all know, collaboration is a real critical skill for not just work, but for life, right? It's something actually even in central office and all the departments, the data we get from everybody, we're silent. We're, you know, we're not working collaboratively. Not, it's a problem in practice here too. So we all know that that is a value and that is a life skill for students. So we decided that that was a really critical skill. And then discipline. And we decided that on discipline data, that we were going to be working with our teams to reduce the number of discipline overall. We had some critical components, but we felt it was really important that we talk about overall discipline because I'll just say, if you target ones, this is where this is dangerous, okay? If you target one specific area, guess what? It gets coded differently and then it moves over here. So we said, no, yes, we're going to do that and we're going to have an overall core of reducing overall discipline in our schools because that really is the ultimate goal and to have improved restorative practices in our school. So just sharing that we, we talked about that a lot and we said, no, we don't want it to shift. You know, we want to go from respect to something else. We want it to reduce overall. So that was something that we felt was really important. And we, we, we know everyone agrees to that.
And I think that one ties to this next one, attendance. I mean, yeah. Discipline is reduced in attendance.
Absolutely. And we really debated that as well, but we thought that that attendance is really critical because attendance also is about engagement, right? It's closely tied in link. And so when students are coming, they're feeling engaged, they're feeling challenged. And if they're not, then that's data and information too. And this one is really important. And so we decided, because, you know, the state also has made, made some changes that the high school and beyond planning is a requirement, a hundred percent of all of our students by twelfth grade. We felt that was too late for our, for us. It's just too late. We should be starting in ninth grade, actually in eighth grade, talking about high school and beyond planning. We started in middle school. I, Mr. Christogras was nodding his head because that is work that he's focused on. And we, so we decided to make the measure in eleventh grade. And as you notice, we've talked about targeted ninety, ninety percent for year one, ninety-five percent for year two, and a hundred percent moving forward because it is required that we have a hundred percent by twelfth grade. But if we do it by twelfth grade, it'll be too late and we'll be caught up guard. So we said, no. And it's going to be happening sooner than that. So we don't, we feel like middle school's involved in doing that work. Then we should have, be able to meet ninety percent for our eleventh graders.
But shoes, how do you feel about that?
I mean, I'm part of that ten percent, I realized. So. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a good idea just for somebody to take note of, because the force, like running starts students, which I am, we don't necessarily, we're very in touch with communication. So you're going to get a lot of like missing percentages from those students. So just make sure to.
Why it has to start earlier, right? That's why it has to start earlier. It can't wait even for some of our students. It can't wait till eleventh grade. It just can't, especially when you're about running start and students who are doing internships or other things. So middle school is going to be working on that. But I'll just say, our data on that wasn't that high this year. So we have a lot of room to grow, but that's why we're going to start earlier on that. But we decided it was an important measure for college and career, for students to really start digging into really understanding their avenues and the work that they can do.
Let me see your.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay, good. Do you have any suggestions? Tell me to jump in.
Yeah.
Hear anything?
And anybody else in the board, I'm just going to take a pause right now. I just want to go around the room. Is there any comments from anyone here? So anyone want to add anything?
I was just wondering on this one, is there a template? Is there a something that?
It's online and we, I use the program through the state. And so with that, we can actually do tracking. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, we, Zello, that's a product that's endorsed by OSPI, so we get it by the state. In twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the state will have their own portal. For every district in the state will have to upload to all OSPI.
Of these, high school and beyond plans?
Yeah, yeah. So applying, right? They're like, you need to do this. So there's accountability there. It's nice. And it's also great for kids.
With a non-gratuity, if they don't?
It would be more, the school district would probably get a talking to or email from all OSPI or something and say, hey, you know, the exciting fact that when you're suing, finishing this or something like that.
But I think that's super critical, just speaking as somebody who was a first-generation college student. I mean, if it wasn't my ninth grade teacher talking to me about it, my family had no clue what to do. None. In fact, I remember my mom crying in eleventh grade, right when we met with the counselor, because she just didn't know how to help. And so that's why I think student ownership of the process is really critical. And then I also believe though there should be family engagement because parents need to know, right? How to support their student, how to support, what is running start, what is, you know, all these things. And so that's why starting early is really critical because then we can learn from, okay, how do we engage with families on this process, one? How do we inform families about all of the financial obligations, right, which is really critical? And then I, I was just going to be honest, and how do we actually support families who culturally don't believe their kids shouldn't move away from them, right? Like, I know that was. don't believe their kids should move away from them, right? Like, I know that was my dad, no, just stay here, you're fine, just stay here. And it was my mom who said, no, she's got to go, right? And so the more we can engage in these conversations, starting earlier. And I remember seeing a survey where they actually interviewed all of these high school students. And the research section had to do it early and often and talk often about it. But there were some kids that they never even heard about even in college until eleventh grade or twelfth grade. And that's really not, not, it's just not right.
Question, there was a, um, presentation done about, um, Zello, uh, last year's Zello-ish. And it was speaking to, um, starting, having like the Zello program at the elementary level and then working its way, um. Um, I'm not sure what happened to that, but I just remember.
That's good.
So I'm not sure how soon we're, we're looking as far as implementation or talking about things of that. Because once things are at a younger age, it becomes habit and like, I mean, it, it's just almost natural to keep the process going.
Well, college and career should be starting in elementary school, those conversations, right? But the high school beyond those technical pieces, definitely in middle school. I mean, but you should be talking about with all the students all the time about, um, ways, you know, uh, just getting students to start thinking about all of the possibilities. And I will say, we probably know half of the jobs in the next twenty-five years anyway, that's gonna be very. The students, the students probably have more ideas than we do.
The other part of that too is, is, um, really getting particularly students and families to understand the financial implications and financial, because I've seen so many times, the big universities come in and load up our students with debt. And that's, everybody needs to understand what that's about.
Yeah, and there is values to running start or college and high school, because guess what? That minimizes cost and reduces the number of years students have to attend after. So there's a lot of benefits. And so some of the things that we're starting to do, it's promising for our students. So anyway. But I will share, uh, that this is something that we felt was really critical. So, um, we added that high school piece, um, high school and beyond planning into this, uh, level. Okay, next, uh, relationship, oh, I skipped relationships somehow. Did I skip relationships or is that the next slide? Great. Um, relationships, this is the part that we decided that, uh, we really did some work on. And this is where we took feedback from, uh, the community and students and also, uh, the board, especially around, um, using different, um, types of reporting or surveying, um, here. So we have, you see a mix of, um, the CEZ survey data for belonging and identity. And then you'll see they have the healthy use survey. And we specifically called out three specific questions on the healthy use survey that we were interested and focused on. So, um, I have that info data, uh, that information for the last one. And then families are engaged in with their school and community. And so one of the things that's required, um, it is required, for example, for every, uh, third grade family, uh, to get a report on their third grade progress. And it is required that they have a conference. And, uh, we decided it was super critical that ninth grade families have that information as well. Kindergarten families as part of the, um, the, uh, the, the onboarding for kindergarten students and PK. So we listed PK, K, third grade and ninth grade as, uh, critical for, uh, all, we should have conferences all the time. But, uh, that were critical for conferences, especially when families entered from middle school to ninth grade. So that was something that we felt was critical. Uh, but those are baseline, um. Of course, we're gonna encourage conferences for everybody, but this is what we're. And then as a district, and then families feel informed about school and district events. So prove satisfaction, um, with district communications and school communications.
Okay, did you remember taking the healthy use survey? Okay. Now, I mean, it's supposed to be given every two.
Every two years.
This is what we give it to show. To middle school and high school, so.
This is the one that asks you that you can interrupt.
Yeah.
Right, that's very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that I saw, like, another years is, you see yourself in that third year, that's one, uh, following. That one's still, I mean, fairly low. I think we need some higher improvement in that one, but anyway.
Yeah. And I think that is, um, and that's part of the work that we have to continue to do. And the work continues right around ethnic studies and all those things. Next slide.
I don't blame you, Alex, by the way. You guys take so many certain. I'm sure someone just could like that.
And then this one, we decided for, we continued the work on belonging, um. Students will feel connected and supported by their school community and accepted for who they are. So that's where I'm going, uh, sorry, uh, next slide, I'm sorry. As staff will know, students by name, strength, culture and need, um, we felt this was a critical, uh, component. So, uh, this was one of the survey items that we talked about. And also, we decided here, this is where we talked about, so. Alex, when we talked about when I asked, uh, uh, not Alex, but Dennis, remember when the, when I asked you, what's the one critical thing that you really wanted to see, um, happen in Taquilla School District? And your feedback to me was, um, high academic standards and, um, rigor. So we decided that we would put in, uh, a goal specifically around access for high-quality classes that will expose them to a variety of potential career careers. And we decided, so really thinking about representation, um, in AP honors, and honors includes college and the high school, um, and highly capable classes, and then the future educator programs. So we designed, um, some, um, uh, one metric to hold us accountable to representation of, uh, students with IP's, multilingual learners, experiencing homelessness, all of, all of our students into those programs, because oftentimes those are students that are actually left out of honors, left out of, of all of those. And it's about thinking about what teaching actually looks like and how do we adapt and support. We have many, many students with IP's who are also have many areas of giftedness, right? That we don't recognize as a system. So it's something that we're gonna be working on. And so I just wanted to let you know that your feedback to me got integrated here as something that we're gonna be paying attention to.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I wanna also appreciate that, also especially mentioning the highly capable program, because I was very vocal on that, it was like, you know, like the history behind that. And then when we got the data last year on it, like the enrollment data was very disproportionate for Black and Brown students. So I'm glad that I was in here for this.
Yeah, and we, uh, and when we talk about representation, if we have a programmatic, but it should be specifically Black and Brown students as well. So we'll fix that as well. Um, and then staff will work actively towards transforming into an anti-racist organization. Uh, we did have our all-staff kickoff and we actually are meeting and talking about the work and the title of the kickoff was uh, building an anti-racist district. And we also recognize we have a lot of work to do. Um, and, uh, but we have a lot of staff attend and we have all levels and, uh, we have nutrition staff attend and we have custodial staff attend. And so that's work we're gonna continue to build upon. Uh, and then the last one is, um, one of the things in learning about, so I'll go back to what Director Bullerjack said earlier that I did not correct, know that students were in, uh, non-credited classes, but part of that was also contributing, we believe, to student state identified in, um, uh, ELL and multilingual categories. And so we, longer than they probably should have. So, uh, I know that Sholter, Foster and all the elementary schools are really thinking, I'm gonna state this here, is pushing in, uh, our services into, so that students are getting core curriculum, they're getting tier-one instruction, so that's the goal. And, um, and so that students, it's a push-in model, I'm gonna say that out loud, it's a push-in model uh, for our students to actually, so that instead of pulling them out, right, all the time into these, you know, intervention classes or intervention courses, no, staying in the general education classroom, getting access to the curriculum. And then really, if it's gonna be a pull-out for any reason, that it's very, very selective, that it's very few students. And probably really at the beginning of the more of a newcomer, but not, but really as soon as you can, getting them into general education courses. So our goal is because there is that a hundred percent of our students who qualify for, under the, you know, the WIDA assessment, that they exit within, uh, five years. And so that means they exit level four. And I do know about your feedback about having that as a smart goal, so we're gonna work on that and we'll get that together. But, um, that was something we felt like was a baseline goal for the district, that we have students exit. Because when you, you come into the system as a, a non-English speaker, you take the WIDA test, then you're placed level one, level two, level three, level four, just explained to the public. Uh, but we have over fifty percent about like, what's our number? It's like forty?
More than forty percent, like forty-two or forty-three that are in programs six or more.
Yes.
Which, and the majority of those students have been in the program in Taquilla for nine years. And so that means we have some, we have lots of work to do in lots of areas.
Yeah.
And, and I wanted to just kind of, because we got this, uh, graph about where the spread of those, um, students are. I noticed in, in Sholter, you had a goal around, hopefully the long term. But for me, we need to go farther back in the system. And so I was noticing like where there's eighty-two students in third grade that have been in, um, ELL status for four years. That's where we need to go, because then if we can, it's much easier to get them out of ELL status when they're in elementary schools and secondary schools. So if we start working on that number, and that's fortuitously, it's in the third grade, which is one of our focus areas anyway.
Yeah.
So if we can figure out what's going on with those eighty-two students and start pulling that down, so then you don't get those one at a time. So anyway, I just want to make that point. That's where we need to go figure out what's going on.
And I will add that, um, it's the work of all our grade levels and all the.
For sure, yeah.
And I will just add that it's also about a mindset such, such shift as well, right? So, uh, working towards that, it's gonna be a lot of work. There's belief work we have to do. Um, and, you know, in all honesty, right? People, we're trained in a certain way, right? And we, um, keep doing the same thing because of our belief that it's working, that it's within a year. But we're saying, okay, we're taking the longitudinal look at our student population, so we need to start thinking all of these things. And I think what I want everyone to understand, even though this is divided up in different goal areas, you can see how they all intersect, right? So working on the multilingual, um, uh, percentages for exiting amount is also can be a contributor and supporter for highly capable access. Right? All of those work together. Uh, thinking about third grade focus, right, for iReady also is a contributor for this as well. So there's things that they're, we're all doing and they all interconnect at some level. So I don't want people, yes, we're presenting it in a different way. And then that's the job of the school leaders, really, which is they have to make sense of this and then pull it together, right? Uh, so that really is the work that they have to do. And before I move to anything next, are there any more questions about this? But I just wanted to highlight for the community and the board members, the thinking around some of these goal areas and thinking about the work and why we're trying to keep it focused. Uh, because I will say, um, having been, uh, a principal and a principal that's actually improved, uh, proved instruction. When you focus on too many things, you're successful at nothing. Yes, you have to keep it narrow, you have to keep it focused, but they all have to intersect in some way. So, um, when you focus on a few key pieces, that's why in the high school, you saw that high school has like their fortified key pieces, elementary have parts of these key pieces, middle school. But altogether, we're saying, this is our work that we're gonna be all committed to focus in. Any questions from everyone or any comments?
So I, I looked at, so I wanted to reference back, um, the comment was, uh, so I'll just go back to the high school beyond then. So, uh, that came from, uh, Jennifer Frachonda, who's our college of her specialists. And the college of her specialists is K-12, it was the whole thing. So that's what she, so, you know, maybe you kind of check that. That was, that was that plan that you were talking about.
Anything else? And you're like, ah. It's a lot. Students, uh, you, the minister Alex, do you have anything to add or anything to comments from your perspective as a high school student coming through the whole system? Anything you wanna add or anything that you think we're missing the boat on?
I don't know if we do, because I know at the high school, we do a in-class instruction for like MLL students. I don't know if we have that at the elementary school as well, because I know that's something we started doing recently. And I was interviewed for, for like, uh, uh, it's like a training for the school district lately, or like recently. And that's something I mentioned, is having, maybe having that, starting at the elementary school level could really help those to, like, you know, like you said, stopping those pull-out classes, that would go, uh, uh, MLL student as well. And that was, those classes did make me feel a little bit like out, outcasted from the rest of the students, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, it's funny, because, uh, so I have a student, I'm my own personal son with an IP. And, um, he told me he felt the same way in elementary. Um, but in middle school, because everyone's moving at the same time, when they got targeted support, it didn't feel as stigmatizing, right? But in elementary, they were missing core instruction, they were missing a fun activity, they were missing something. So, um, it is something to think about, about how we do that all throughout the level. And then how do we make sure that even if they're going to a separate class, that they're still getting core content and then the support they need? So it's all of that together. Any other comments or questions?
Can I add one comment?
Sure.
You brought up in your interview, it was super powerful, Dennis and all the people who attended the training really appreciated all the things you had to share. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. I was just gonna say that I love the push-in model. But it takes a percent.
Oh, yes and no. It can, it doesn't have to. But, um, so that's, I'll say, for example, I know Foster is working on a co-teaching model. So where they're bringing in a co-teacher to work alongside. So what happens is it's about master scheduling in a unique and different way, right? Right? And so, uh, they're looking at co-teaching and I know they're looking at it, because I just met with one of the brand new newcomer teachers. They were a teacher last year and they're, and I said to them, oh, when I met them at the, at the Montenegro, I said, so what's your position? They said, well, I was this, but this year I'm doing co-teaching. And so I, I, so they were a little nervous and I said, well, I'll just share with you. So my son also benefited from co-teaching as an IP student with an IP. And when I went to curriculum night, I said, the teachers that I talked to said, especially the teachers that were in the core content area, said, um, I will never go back. Like, I love it. I love this model of co-teaching. So it really is about, you know, you know, collaboration, all of that, those skills we talked about. The other thing I would love to see here is how can we support, and we're talking about this already, is having our teachers get, uh, endorsed and supporting the work so that they can, as they work on professional development and we give them clock hours. I'm thinking about how we can work, sometimes I get a second endorsement or things, I hope it work on getting uh, some type of support for a secondary endorsement, you know, in multiple, because I go into California, they require all every teacher in California has to be a CLAD train, which is their, their equivalent of a basically meal endorsement, but it's required. It's something I wanna do in the state of Washington, so get on that. I've talked to that board, because I was on that board before and I did mention it, I talked about an inclusionary endorsement that would talk about, yeah, all, can be done to all of our students and having that, so bring that up. Of course, I think it was four years ago and they all said, that's a great idea, I see, and there you go. Here we go, here we are. But thinking about, what does that actually look like in Taquilla? And how do we partner with our university partners and how do we support that as a system? I know we, I know this budget implications on some of that too, that how can we support our teachers in some of our professional development and the work here? Our paraeducators, all of those, like they're building that pipeline to do that work. That was really would be amazing thing for Taquilla School District.
So, I would like to say on co-teaching, because I think that's a really, um, promising model. So I, I mentioned before, I I went to, um, junior prep school and they use co-teaching and they have phenomenal results, consistently year after year after year. And of course, the way they do it is they pay the teachers about half a week's pay dollars, which is not gonna work, not gonna apply. But that's one of the arguments that I use when I go down to the state and say, okay, this works. Now give us a lot more money so we can implement it. And then, so to the degree that, you know, I know we started, uh, planning with the well, that we can show results from that. Please let me know, because then I, then I got into Olympians, they're like, hey, this actually works. The other thing I wanted to say, because I talked to some people over in the Snowbowl Yalay School District, who've been working on co-teaching related to, uh, IPs in particular for a while. And it was interesting, she said, we've been leading that effort, um, it's, it's, it's hard because you can only get it to work in about fifty percent of the cases because the staff has to change how they do their, their business. And you have to really trust who you're doing the co-teaching with. And that's not that easy.
No.
So it's, you know, you have to be very careful about how you implement it, but there are examples of where it is working and what not to do. So, you know, I think that's a really promising follow-up.
And we're, yeah, we're starting. And I think, uh, but it's gonna be continuing professional development, collaboration, um, coordination. It, it does take time, right? And then I'll say, one example of how they've done that, in one school I saw, when I saw co-teaching happening, is they actually schedule the students with IP's and multilingual learners first. It's how they do that. They schedule the students that, they do that first, and then they schedule everyone else around. It's how they do that, they schedule the students that they do that first, and then they schedule everyone else around that. So then they can fill in the other classes, right? So just letting you know, that's an example of uh what do you call it, uh what do we call it? Uh de-segregating our master schedule.
No, right, de-centering.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Students who are.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually, it's it's universal design. Is what you're thinking is the students that need the most, you know, the most, uh you need scheduling, get scheduled first. At the targeted classroom, absolutely, all right. I have thoughts. Okay, this has been a great discussion, I'm really glad it's going on. Uh but I think it's, uh so this is the work I'm just sharing, uh. I've shared this with folks uh at the All-Step kickoff, I'm sharing, I've shared this with the board a little bit. But and I also shared this with Dr. Rogers' art, so the work really is about aligning it now, this is the year for aligning. So we're just starting, so like the the principals have only been in their schools with their teachers for what? Week two days, three days, something like that, right? Uh we had the kickoff just, you know, not even ten days ago, so um. They're starting those conversations, but this is the work that has to happen. So we have to do, uh so they have been, we have uh the timeline that we're working on. Is just like, you know, we have last year, we're we're school certified, right, through O S B I. Uh they develop a school improvement plan um that were created in spring, and they also created April of twenty twenty three. Um then you have the strategic plan that was adopted in August of twenty twenty three. Um and then just leadership met to start beginning to plan, that's August tenth, a line network around that. Uh we are now in the process of data being published. Uh so and we're starting to analyze, we're still waiting for O S B I's official like launch of the scores. And we still do not have our weakest scores from them yet, so just letting you know, those are two big ones we're waiting for. So once that happens, we'll be setting our baseline data and targets with our school teams. And then the school leaders and teams will be supported with an O S B I coach, and I will share who they just met with this morning. So I'm just letting you know, a lot of work has been happening uh just in the last four weeks. But they have just come with their staff, they had to lift up school, so they're starting their conversations and they're planning around that. I've been very clear with everyone that our plan for this year for alignment is the work around equity teams. And equity goals, school improvement and student planning have to work on alignment, so that's the work they're going to be doing. Will they be, they're gonna start working on their school improvement planning, they're working with their teams, and then read um. And then updating that for this year, so they've been given um time, they're gonna have time this year to start doing that. Um the O S B I coach was with us this morning with the principals and small cabinet. And they've already started to set meetings, and then and she heard the message, we spent this morning. Uh unpacking street data uh together as a team. And so there, we're just like I said, we're starting that alignment work right now, any questions around that? This is, but this is the plan for this year, is to do all that alignment work on this. And one of the questions they asked, Dr. Rogers' art asked the team is, where do you see? I mean, really, well, in this meeting, but where do you see white supremacy shoulders in your school improvement plan? That's the question the students should ask too, where do we see that? Right, is student voice part of that, is family engagement part of that? How are we doing that? And I will say, because I remember Director Bollard mentioned this. In a system that actually requires assessments, certain assessments, right? And even though they're making attempts to work on bias in all the assessments, but let's be honest. They're not all there, there, so that's the work we're continuing on as a team. Any questions before I?
And we're still working in English.
Well, but that's a great question, the week product actually already is available in Spanish. So that's, we're having these conversations about when is it appropriate for a student to take Spanish, because I'll just say. This is the part, so why we need people who know this, right? But I ready, it's an academic-based assessment. So is it appropriate for students who receive, you know, when's it appropriate to take a Spanish assessment, or yeah? So we're talking about that for future planning of our dual language program. Or students who actually have been instructed in Spanish, maybe they came from Medico when they're in third grade, is it appropriate for them to take an I ready test? But I know it's not appropriate for all of our Spanish speakers, because they don't have, they they have. The basics, the Spanish skills, but they don't have the academic or the instructional skill. So we're having these conversations to go a little deeper on when is it appropriate for our students to actually take. Those uh academic assessments, for their academic assessments in their in their first language. Yeah, so we're talking about that right now.
I wonder if you could just speak a little bit more to the equity team and goals, and kind of like what your thought is around when. What is the work of aligning that to those two?
Well, because I think with equity work, um so, I'll use some of my past experience. Um there's a lot of teams that I think that we have to have conversations about race. And we have to have conversations about anti-racism, and we have to have conversations about cultural responsibility. And you can have the conversations, but if you don't have a connection to uh the school improvement planning process. Or even equity analysis, right? I actually see this team being a support for equity analysis of data, equity analysis of the the school improvement plans. That that's where I see.
So it's almost like just en- engaging that team more.
Yeah.
As a foundational component of how we are thinking about all of our.
Yeah, it's all connected.
Yeah.
It's all connected, and they and they need to be part of the conversation, right? Because let's say, uh I'll just give an example, discipline. Right, if you looking at discipline, let's say respect, right? And if you can look at respect, and if you look at data, till you're blue in the face, and make all these decisions. But if you're not having that anti-racism equity conversation around culture, around respect. Uh around relationships, around respect, trust and respect, you know what I mean? Um and they're not looking at that data, not willing to look at that data. Right, then, that then, the the any strategies you create for that, I guarantee are not gonna work. They're just not, if you're not willing to talk about how uh Latino families or Mexican versus Caribbean families. Think about respect in terms of the work, right? And and so anyway, it's deeper than just, oh, let's look at the data, respect, and let's look at that. And then let's just make some decisions, you have to have those equity conversations and cultural conversations. Um because if you don't, uh then you're gonna be just re- just re-perpetuating the problem. I'm gonna ask anyone of the school leaders, do you have anything to add to that from a school perspective?
So um kind of to piggyback kind of off what you said, I remember um I went to a training, it was um. The refugee grant that we get, they have their annual training, and I remember um sitting in this training and. The lady was speaking to um, you know, when we have immigrants, refugees that are students that come from different countries. That they act differently based on their environment, right? So if teachers aren't aware that some of their students only spend an hour in a schoolhouse, right?
Yeah.
Then they may not understand why the student gets up and down, or they're agitated, or they're, you know, fidgety, right? So I think it's important, it's what you were saying about, you know, just having that um insight or understanding about where your students are coming from. So that you know how to navigate differently when they're acting out, acting bad, acting differently.
Yeah.
Um if you don't have that context, you're you're quick, you may be quicker to judge versus understand.
I remember when I was a newcomer teacher, I had all these students that came from Vietnam, I had like, I think eleven of them. And um they were, you know, similar, you know, they all, they all went to school in Vietnam, I hadn't gotten this, I think, fifth graders. So they had many years of schooling, I had two students in particular who were really struggling. With some of the, they weren't, you know, it was very different. Well, when I finally interviewed the family, they were in refugee camps, and didn't go to school for two years, you know? That changed everything, and it changed my perspective, but I had to interview the family. And talk to the family with their interpreters. So what happened, right? Because they didn't have the same experience as as nine of the other students. And so that is information that teachers, that takes a little time. But you need to put in that that work to understand those nuances. And I will say, um we as educators, we've been trained in a certain way around discipline, we've been trained in strategies. In a certain way, and so we're the ones making decisions around the rules. So we actually need to dig a little deeper to understand, is this? Is this the right, uh is this the right procedure, or the role for this classroom, for this environment, for this situation? That's a lot of, that's that's deep work, so.
And I'm just saying, typically on the student surveys, this issue of students disrespecting other students comes up as a popular area. I'm just curious what you guys um have any thoughts on pauses of it or? I mean, do you see that, do you feel, you know, do you see a lot of students disrespecting other students, or maybe you don't see that?
Um, well, for me, not too often, but like. Yeah, I'm trying to think of this in here, because I don't see it come up too much in the classes that I've been in, but I have heard about like school fights. And like things like that, and. Yeah, yeah, but like, for for my experience, I haven't seen too much of that. Students disrespect their students, especially like after COVID. Everyone is more to themselves, so like, back in middle school, I've seen it more. Because like, people are disrespecting me too, and I've seen it a lot before, but like after. I've seen like a decline in like disrespect, you know, it's weird.
I don't know if it's a COVID thing, or it's like a middle school versus high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like, high school is definitely a lot nicer, I think, also because we talked about like respecting each other, like. It was, the curriculum was also very diverse in high school. Not that it wasn't in middle school, but it's just, we talked about more, I guess, like serious topics. And there's a lot more understanding of that, so I think. The sense of respect is there, and it's taught in high school a little bit more carefully compared to like middle school. So yeah, it's like, I remember a lot of more disrespectful instances in middle school for sure. And maybe it's also like a thing with maturity and like. Yeah. Because I remember like studies, it's like, they're crazy things to me now, like the nicest people. Then if I bring it up, it's like, you know what you did to me during middle school.
Well, yeah, when you get to go to your twenty fifth classroom unit, you get to tell them. Yeah, and they come up to and say, oh, I hear you're a principal now, I'm like, yeah, I am. Right, or something like that, it's it's it goes a really have have conversations, people change. Right, that's bottom line, people change, and there's developmental factors in there too, but there's cultural factors for sure. Absolutely, uh and active situational factors, what you talked about with being a refugee and all of that, there's many, many factors. In looking at, so you're tackling how the equity teamwork align, just the whole improvement process. And that's the work that Dr. Rogers' art announced are gonna help our equity teams with, is sort of build that alignment together. Um and it could be anywhere from, like you said, uh representation, ethnic studies can be a focus for the team. Maybe that's a focus for the work, multilingual learners could be the focus, it could be. Family engagement is a focus, it could be anything, disproportionate discipline could be the focus, restorative practices could be the focus. So that's what's exciting, because the schools get to decide and look at their data, and look at their school improvement plan. And really work together with the equity teams to decide how they're gonna work together and what they're gonna focus on. So that's exciting work to think about. All right, next slide. Okay, just to share uh the work with the um the principals, they're they're gonna start the planning process, they're gonna start to look at data analysis. Quality and quantitative data, identify goals for their schools, for the students, um professional learning, think about their school year plan for the learning. What that, what are they gonna do outside of the district, inside the district, through the district office, through their school teams? Because they also provide professional development, open dialogue about anti-racism and where it's showing up in the community. We just had that topic this morning. And we talked about what do we think about, how do we think our, so we talked about what we thought. That from our school, our our school culture, but then I thought, what are the students and the and the families, what do we think they need? And we had some really honest conversations around that. And then decide continues to segregate data, look at it based on program, look at it rates, look at it, you know, different, different ways. Uh and look at who's improving, who's not improving, and how do we pivot? Because we have to stop doing what's not working, right? And so with that, uh oh, and I I have a sample of what this looks like, so I'm just gonna. Uh what I'll do is I will share a draft uh to every, all the board members. Uh I actually had this here, just didn't get on the slide here, but it's actually an example of. How we're uh tracking the data over three years. And we're looking, hoping to build out some type of dashboard, um hopefully by the end of the year, so we can track some of these key indicators. So we can have that more public. Um but internally, right now, we're working on this, just developing this, and we've been working with Jeff's team on that, thank you, uh Jeff. But started thinking about how so we've been building an internal document to start tracking our progress. Um and then what does that look like from a district level? There was supposed to be on the slide, but it didn't belong here, but I will send that to you, I'll send you the whole draft. But we're still working on that, because we're adding all the extra components that we're thinking about. And then with that, uh we're gonna work, uh pass it on to the next slide, which is uh So Walter. And so I did change the smart hole to uh focus holes, but he doesn't have that. So but he can talk about it in general, so the 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 goal was supposed to be talking about. What are, uh how are we gonna start working on the conversational pieces and that alignment work? So I'll I'll pass it on to uh uh the principal.
Yeah, I think for us, and the two areas I really want to highlight were the work on multilingual learners and also social motion learning. We started our multilingual initiative, our program change last year, um where we kind of eliminated the standalone. M L L sections, you know, based on uh different language levels that you're very, they're coming out of their music course. Uh we did keep the newcomer section, and you know, we continue to see a lot of newcomers.
Aren't they cute?
Just a lot more than twice. But uh, you know, I think the the thing is, is it it was a huge paradigm shift. For us at the building, in in the sense of how we serve students and. And and I appreciate the work that uh came out at the district level to support the principals as we, as a as a whole. You know, processes, we may move to this multilingual initiative, right? And the dual language program that started the cascade view, and then are being able to add, I think, ethnic studies. Of course, for, you know, heritage speakers, as part of that, is we gonna get ready ahead of time, way ahead of time. Because our kindergartners will be here. I mean, it's crazy, it'll be, as parents, we know how fast that's like, right? So we have to get ready now, but it's, it's been a big shift. Um I have three great coaches in my building that took on that work this last year. And are continuing to move that work forward, really, but boils down to is um focusing on adults. And what they're doing, because it's, and how they're supporting language learners in the classroom, right? Because as Dr. Prinoza was mentioning, we we need them to be connected with core content. And great level standard, and so they're in with everyone. And that's hard for some of the staff, because they're not used to that. And but they have been very uh open and very willing and. So that's great, and I, but I also agree that we need, excuse me, to do more to support them. And I think having the opportunity for them to have language acquisition training and 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 more tools in their toolbox. That's kind of, I think, a formal endorsement kind of thing would be great, but. In the meantime, the work with the coaches is key, and it's a lot of that side-by-side coaching. And we were really flying the airplane mobility of last year. And and we started out doing things one way, and that wasn't working, and we had to make a shift. We we've kind of got more of a. Informal co-teaching model, that's it's more of a code, this. How to describe it? We are looking, what we're doing is looking where the need is the greatest, and then there was, as we get ready to, we're doing I ready right now. We'll have our I ready scores, uh we'll be reshuffling the master schedule a little bit, schedule-wise, where students are based on some of those outcomes. Then we'll know which teachers have the most language learners with the most needs when and where. So we can start to go supports, whether the the uh parent educators are pushing in the classrooms. Or if they're the coaches partnering and pairing up with those individual teachers to support them. Then, and that's kind of like the the individual piece, but I'm going across the board, the professional development is for the entire staff. And really, one of the big focuses of the coaches issues on the board is the, um we really want uh. What we really feel that will move the needle for kids is getting more dialogue, getting them talking, more student talk, getting. Getting language learners to be speaking more, like bringing down that affective filter. In in such a way that they're comfortable enough to start engaging language with their peers at their level. And you know, staff learning more about the meter levels and they can do uh. Levels that they know if a kid's uncertain, they're here on their score, here are things I know they can do. And and coming from an asset based perspective, what they can do versus where we've always come from. Oh, they can't do this yet, or they can't do this. And it, like I said, it's a big shift, but. Um that's that's the bulk of the work that we're doing around language learners this year. And we still have supports in place. Especially for students who are just getting those early reading skills. So but we're trying to use our homework time and we have protected reading time to be working intensively with those students. Cause right now, if you put a book in front of them, a lot of them, you just be put a book in front of them. So we're using that time. Uh to do some uh very specific and creative work with them. But we don't want them missing out on what homework is about either. So the other three days a week there, maybe those students would be involved with homework, but.
And then you're going to use their translators in the classroom.
Yeah, yes. Um so we have this phone policy, right? But we also recognize there have to be exceptions to that, right? And and you know, sometimes I feel like the junkyard, oh, cause you know, the kids in the hallway have the phone and I'm like. But I also have to remember that sometimes the students using the phone as a translator to try to figure out whether. Get help on what's going to do. So yeah, you wanna make sure you're asking before you bark, right? But yeah, and and you know, this, the the M L L staff, the coaching staff has been really, really good. About working with the teaching staff on here are the tools. That we can be using to support students who who are building their English skills, right? And um having access to read right this year in all the classrooms is huge. Teachers are really excited to do. We were talking about it in uh in our training and then uh we were able to say, oh, by the way, parents just set that up and it's active today, right? And so um yeah, have, there are so many, there are so many languages. Right? I mean, it's great that um that we've got the dual language piece moving through. Right? And and it's, and like what I explained to the staff was, that's one piece of what we're doing for all our language learners. It just so happens that being a large group of Spanish speakers, and so this is what we're doing for them. But doesn't mean we're not doing, here all of it, but we as a black community doing for our language learners. I just have to say the the start of the year was really positive. And I think a lot of it was Dr. Prudential because her kickoff really set a good, it set a great tone. Right? And in my, in my follow up with my staff that day. We all, myself included, were excited and are, you know, really happy to hear that. The the people at the district level are in service to the buildings, right? They haven't heard that message in a while, right? And that was really important, but really set the tone. And then uh one of the things as part of the multi-language. Lingual initiative, I would, I kind of explained the dual language piece to the staff. And they were really excited. They're excited about our part in it and they wanted to know more about how they could be involved. So there's great readiness to benefit. I feel like the staff's in the right place, so I'm excited about where we go with language learners this year. On top of that, then uh the biggest, like the lack, this whole lack should be. Focus of work in buildings, really about social emotional learning and setting the stage for. How we want to feel and how we want to act and uh. What we want our community to be like in the classroom. And so we've been using the ruler lessons. We're gonna continue that work through home room. That's it. I love how I remember it's a great way of leverage connection families, uh since we move our kids. But you know, if I started a D S homework in sixth grade, then I'm gonna be with him till eighth grade. And and it's building a component, so the parents have a a firm connection that doesn't change. Cause you know, at middle school, it's changed every semester uh for a lot of the classes, but um. We are continuing our work with um along partners, used to be sound discipline, but um so our next two. Uh staff, really, these P times, I have to not call smart lenses anymore, because um this is all this reminded me of smart lens states. But our next set of times with our staff will be following up with along partners. And and so what we're really looking at is is getting students to really start thinking about and talking about. Things that lead to them feeling safe at school and feeling respected. And then so like our goal was really around them feeling respected, because in our C E data, it was showing that they weren't seeing that. And and I would agree, I think there's a maturity. Come from the hormones come into play a little bit at middle school, but still we can do better. And the more we can do at this level, the better it makes it for them when they get to my. Yeah, exactly. So um. Yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of the focus of the year um. Again, I I I think part of the work, though, you know, each classroom's creating charters for each class. So they're gonna make a lot of charters because they have, you know, seven periods a day and what kind of home right? But really, we want them all making sure that they're feeling. Good about where they are and what what we want to be able to do. One of the things that came up. In our C E data and in our centric data was around common expectations, right? And so that was a big part of the work that we did um with students over the last week. Because if you think about it, it would be confusing coming from an elementary where you're predominantly with maybe one or two boats. Throughout your day and then you're moving between seven different places and if the expectations and the are different. Makes it harder to know. Or how people are gonna react, like if I have my cell phone out in this class, but not this class. You know, it's okay to get if I'm locked, you know, there are just so many variables and. We need to set the students up for success, right? So and part of that is being consistent as the adults and being on the same page. And that, the nice thing is that came out loud and clear in our staff data that we need to do this for our students. And there's a lot of buy-in to that as well. So that will, when we had staff time together, that was a big portion of our staff time and then it's. Damn it with the students. So um like I said, we're we're gonna continue our work throughout the whole year of those lessons. But um we do have our first few P professional ones with long partners and then we're gonna be leadership team. We're looking at trying to survey students again about the trimester time. To see if how they're feeling now as compared to earlier, based on the. The front work, the early work.
By the way, do you guys know what ruler is, you know?
Uh yeah, it's a, it's 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 basically this social emotional program that we use. Um we start out using the mood meter. It's just, it's it's this kind of a self-awareness. Yeah, so it's, it's helping you to become more self-aware, self-aware, and even as adults, it's like. I know when I'm moving already. Very, and I have to be cognizant of how I'm feeling and how that's gonna impact other people. Yeah, it's it it, but it's it's a curriculum that we've adopted. Elementarys have used to, George uses it, uh I monster has the opportunity to.
And part of the deal is that if the students kind of can learn how to recognize their emotions or how to manage them. Manage them, then you're gonna have less discipline problems. You're gonna have more engagement, you know, so it's it's kind of putting it all together.
Here, is the um the consensus home is that newer or is that the case?
We've had, we've had, we've had that. Yeah, the only places that we really. Bit of challenge when we have staff turn over, right? And so what was really hard is like last year, I had thirteen certificate staff. So the kids that were eighth graders that were moving on, no big deal, that those teachers, you know, those guys' teachers were eighth grader, got to be prop six graders. Last year, but then we had a lot of kids whose home room connection was disrupted because staff, it lost.
Um so I love creating charters, I do in almost any group that I'm part of, with those different people or with adults. I think it's, it's really a great time to really dive into those questions about how these things look like, you feel like it sounds like, right? The women's space. I'm curious how much in those charters, um because I mean, assuming. I'm gonna assume that we're doing it in a way that we're asking the young people to generate the things that they wanna feel, right? So I'm curious how much safe and respect even show up or if you're putting those on.
No, they do. So what we did was at the end, last week, last week, at the end of the week, we have a school one assembly. To kind of culminate our time and all the home and uh Mr. Gray, our council, I put together. I don't think the name of the program, but when you enter. Yeah, those were, so the students word class came up with that. And then we had at home a representative from every single home room speak to the entire student body about. How they, what and how they will feel in their class, like what their home, you can't put. And so their word cloud were those words. So I mean, that was really powerful and it was awesome.
Any other question? Okay, we're gonna move into the next slide, which is uh happy to you. So I'm actually. Excellent. Okay, um so maybe not for Prudential. Um I think I share a lot of the same with Mr. Christopher um in digging into the work and what we're doing this year. So my slide is a really big overview of what we're looking at. And so um both of course are gonna be definitely focused around our staff. I'm making sure we're supporting them and what they learn in professional. And often, we do have both setting needs with our staff, which I think will also help with our next steps will be in alignment with our uh school improvement plan. And the strategic planning. Um so we definitely wanna support them and enhancing their professional goals. We also wanna make sure they're implementing high quality, yet culturally relevant instruction. I know that started last year with some of the P E's that took place um as formerly on smartlenses. Um where they, we looked at common core and we looked at different areas in grade levels. We looked at I rating. So um we will continue to look at that, which also plays a role when we look at our. School improvement plans, it's our race and equity goals, which I know you all are building out as well. Um because the way the strategic plan is and then our school improvement plan will be able to go full, we have academics. We have mental health, race and equity, and we also have sale. So we'll look at all those and put those in there. And then of course, definitely um implementing the inclusion practices to support our multilingual learners and our special education. And um one of the things that I I do celebrate our power district is we just didn't say, hey, we're gonna just jump in at elementary, right? We have the middle school, we have the high school, each having something to play a role in supporting our multilingual learners. We are a multilingual. Uh district and so I celebrate that. Um and it allows us to kind of have that cohesiveness as we think about our preschool, the way through our twelfth grade. And what that was like. So we're marching, we'll definitely support this, we'll break those goals down even further based on meeting with the people in the P L Cs. Continually have the conversations that get to the next steps, um the end, looking at how we analyze all this. Um all that good stuff there. So first, we're looking at student learning, which I like the classroom assessments, you know, what are the kids doing? What is the school work looking like? So having P L Cs coming together to look at the student work, what do they see, you know, what's happening, what's not happening, right? Look at the force question, right? What do you do when you get there? How do you know when you get there? What do you do? You gotta, you know, recalibrate. So we'll use all different protocols. Our local demographic data will fall into the attendance, our discipline referral, so it's areas. Wanna make sure we're supporting discipline and all of our students to make sure we're having a true sort of conversation, not just the one he does, real tolerance does not exist. So we definitely will be um looking at discipline referral, making sure that we are aligned with um expectations and communicating with our families. And making sure that um we can have those conversations, which I appreciate Dr. Prudential, we do what they are conducting with officer telling us. We're gonna look at, what does it need to define the words disrespect or define those, right? Because just because you may feel like we're disrespectful, it may not be disrespectful in that culture. So I believe that's also my hope as I do look at our local demographic data. We look at our school processes after we're looking at our services and our program. We're looking at title one, we're looking at our different grants. Um I know, right, we qualify for all sets out. So how can we use uh the funding to support those next up, whether it is attendance, whether it is um our mental health learners, whether it is something that. Deals with our data that we're not at that quite that threshold of being a title one school. Um also, let's see, special education also involves that data as well. Our perception data, our biggest one we do in our district is our C E data. I know we do the um healthy use survey, and I know sometimes in our buildings we do different surveys, but we definitely will use that data to help support what we're looking at. I know our strategic plan, I don't wanna get it wrong, but I think it's belongingness and identity, right? That is something that's heavy. Um looking at relational trust, so looking at the metrics that are within the strategic plan, how does that work with our school improvement? So we can make sure that we are building a foundation, you know, we don't have trust, we don't have this conversation or collaboration. Kids don't feel like they belong with parents, don't feel like they have engagement. We're not, we're not doing anything, right? So creating those partnerships, so that's what that data will look like. We'll also um take what we have for our comprehensive need assessment last year, right? And we're gonna roll that over to look at this year. We know it's a new start of the year, but that data, you know, it's maybe like two and a half months. You know, old, um we continue to dig in where we are in our next steps. We have our S B A data, I know we won't have V I A yet. And currently, right now, we just screening is ongoing, so we're gonna be having some real like live, fresh current data. But last year's data, so we can put it together to look at those next steps, because we wanna make sure that whatever we're doing is timely. We wanna make sure that it is, um it makes sense for our kids. We want our kids to be engaged in the next steps of learning, whether it's the goal segment we have for our strategic plan. I'm gonna make sure that our parents are aware. I'm gonna make sure that us as a school, we're giving that timely feedback, the relevant, real-time feedback to our families. Um and then we want to look at the next slide, that kind of helps with the next steps. And I just wanna like just P L Cs, professional learning communities.
Yeah, I was gonna actually, I heard about five or six um acronyms. First of all, in in our meetings, please, when you guys hear something that you, what? Yeah. So P L Cs, it's professional learning community, that's where.
That's a collaborative, we're teaching, we're working, either brain alive or content groups, it's just a collaboration.
And and you'll hear S E L or S L, that's social emotional learning, so that's all the, you know, there's academic stuff. And then there's all how you handle your emotions and and uh respect and all the, all the kind of social emotional stuff that goes on. And then there's E S Ps, you see up there, that's educational support professionals, those are what kind of. She don't have the same credential as a teacher, but they support in the, you may have heard of healthcare educators in the past, you know. So there's support staff that are in there that you work with and sometimes, but they aren't certified teachers. Um what else did I hear? Oh, V I A, V I A, so that's the test that we give to um language learners. To determine, you know, are they um have a good pre proficiency in English yet, and so there are different levels. And so that's the test that uh we used to do that. And then S B A, you know, S B A. C C E is the, so that's the Center for Educational Effectiveness. They provide us with uh staff, students and family surveys, so you probably have taken that. I'm not sure what they call it, you took it, anyway. Uh so we get kind of the. Uh you know, more perceptual data about what's going on. There's, you know, the S B A measures, the academic stuff and the V I A measures, academic stuff. But this is more about the other stuff that you measure. Um so I think those ones, I don't know, did you hear what I think?
This is not, I've I've been many for the board meetings, everyone speaks in acronyms, that's just what happens. It's not, it's not just you, it's all of us. And so that's one thing we have to work on, especially because we have community listening and we post these. Is making sure we pause and unpack acronyms at whatever level, because we, I, we are educators. We just, that's what we do and uh we do it a lot.
By the way, if you guys wanna do your, your uh people that come after you on paper, you can start writing.
Yeah, we're trying to break all that stuff and we just have to remind ourselves on occasion. And so we're moved to the next slide. Um so I'm just adding this next slide to kind of show you how we're gonna get there, right? We always talk about what we're doing. And I know that all the buildings have kind of went through the different um presentations last year and we went to meetings. But OSPI has powerless, that was the right, powerless, the powerful, we have the book. And so um the graphic, I did kind of add color to it because it was like, basically, I don't know, I have a lot of energy. But I have to give credit to words due, um I didn't help with it, but this is what OSPI frames when you look at what your next steps look like. Which all of our leaders do in our district. Um you know, we have our leadership teams from there. They, you know, whether you have a data team, you may call it something else, it can be also built in your leadership team, your collaboration instruction teams. Well, I just am gonna work on that little area of access culture for learning. And so the next steps are building out these teams and however. And so the next steps are building out these teams and however, you know, this building looks different. So therefore we can look at this data to look at the next steps, you know, and it's not just only staff. We invite parents and community to also participate in, in a lot of our meetings. And, um, the, one of the things that Dr. Drew was talking about is what does that alignment look like? So this, I'm a visual person. So this helps me because, right, our strategic plan over here from the left hand side. And we have belong partners, which is the building of equitable learning opportunities and nurturing growth, formerly known as sound discipline. And, um, some of the things that they're offering this year are some of the things that we want them to come in and cascade, you know, partner with the professional development. I know in our C D data and other survey staff talk about, I mean, professional development. What does it look like? How do we get the support? Well, we have belong partners. And so that's what we wanna do to look at this data to get us the next step for our school improvement to support student learning, achieving their goals. Whether it's academic, whether it's race equity, whether it's anything dealing with, um, social emotional. So these are some of the things that I will be talking with, um, our belong partners, uh, people who have a meeting on Friday, um, for next steps to bring it in. Because looking at our, our next steps, we need to make sure that we are closing the gap and not just looking at academics. Schooling is so much more than just what is your test score. We know that. And as I tell myself, we're more than a test score, right? Um, our kids have real like real amazing experiences. And I tell people all the time, their passports show that. And, um, I'm gonna make sure that we honor our kids every which way we can. So this is how we get to the work by taking these teams, building them up and looking at the next steps. Something we started last year, we started looking at a couple of questions is, um, how are they implementing student points? Right? When we're looking at our lesson plans, are they equitable? How are we giving timely feedback to our parents? Um, and one of the biggest things is like, how do we get there? Right? Think about time and resources. And of course, that's. That's the area we are, our staff is looking at, where does that next step and how do we support to make sure we can do collaborative learning, watch during the school day? How do they get to see their partner teacher teaching during that same time? Um, so we're gonna be creative this year to figure out some things. Um, we're looking at, you know, formative and summative assessments. Um, during what the teachers are doing that are outside of the S B A and the higher level things, because our teachers are doing amazing things. Our kids are making growth. Um, our kids are learning. And so we're super, super excited to, to make sure we can align our school improvement plan to the new strategic plan. And then, you know, have these next steps and call conversation about calibration and how we're also supporting race equity in our classroom and our lesson plan and all the next steps that we have.
Thank you.
So there are a couple of those examples, I'm applying by their formative assessment and summative assessment. So summative assessment is the one that typically you get, take once a year, like the S P A, that's called a summative assessment. And then the formative assessments are ones that you take during the year that hopefully feedback to the teachers about how things are going so they can make some adjustments. Cause if you only do a summit, I mean, at the end of the year, it's kind of like, well, if you didn't get it, good luck, see you next year. And so.
Second one, partners, just because it's working with all of our schools. So we have a partnership with all of our schools. So they're working with Foster, they're working with Schulter, all of, so that's the other piece of alignment work. And so we're doing, and they have a big focus on distorted, distorted practices, right? Promin form practice. So that's the work that they're doing. So I just wanna share. Um, with the board and the community that that is a partnership that we're, we're really digging into this year, um, to build and make that alignment piece work.
You guys know about distorted practices? Have you ever met that term?
I don't know.
Restorative practices requires that, um, when the harm is done, uh, that you bring, um, both parties, the, the person who harmed and the person who was harmed. Together to come together to unpack what happened and come to agreement about how you move forward, right? And so, and it means that the goal is that for me, and when I think about restored practices, that the person that is harming. Understands and thinks about reflective practices about changing their behavior and really doing repair, right? Really doing repair. And the person who's been harmed, uh, starts to heal in that process and they can move forward, uh, next step. The goal is that they both can manage it better. And then the other thing about restored practice, um, is people have to both be willing to do that, right? And sometimes people aren't ready. I've had those conversations. Sometimes the harm's been so bad. But kids are so trauma informed, so trauma impacted, I mean, that you can't do that. So that's, that's where we have to sort of think through what's our next step on that. Um, and so that's when you see that, you know, sometimes principals have to separate kids or move classes or things like that because the harm has been, or the person who's received the harm is so traumatic that they're not. Ready or yet can do that space. So it has to be reciprocal, it has to be agreed to, and that both partners are willing to do that. But the goal is to be in a better place than what happened before and that there's learning for the harm, the person who caused the harm. And that the person feels who was harmed, that they're, that it's there, it's gonna change and that they are, they're willing to refill it as well.
Yeah, that's in, in contrast to, you know, the old fashioned, maybe in this one, if you hurt somebody, you know, they kick you out of school and, and that's the end of it. You're supposed to learn from that. So that's in the contrast.
Yeah. So that's what we're working towards. But we will say there are things, just to say, that are so sometimes egregious that you, there has to be consequences. But, but most things can be done in a restorative way.
Yeah, it's really helpful. Parties involve from like the harm being done and the person who was harmed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So that's the goal is that when we can do a story, and, and so that's also part of what we're doing for staff too. Right? So we sent that letter, um, to staff around about civility, right? But I also say that. That whenever there's conflict, there's emotion, always emotion. And, but you also need skills on how to deal with the conflict. So there's emotion and then there's skills. And our job is to help build up people to have the skills to, to do that. You just gotta say, oh, go in a room and, you know, work it out. It doesn't always work. As you have to have skills. So the belong partners is part of building our skills for staff and students to help do that work. So that's a part of it.
Yeah. And that actually kind of goes on something that I, I think is really important to think about is that. We're not framing social emotional learning as a behavior management tool.
No.
It is not that, right? Social emotional learning is about helping ourselves and young people develop skills. Um, so I just, again, I really wanna be mindful, we're not using that language, we're not endorsing that idea, that it's about behavior management or. Whatever, cause it's not, um, certainly decreased instances of, you know, harmful or negative behaviors. Kicking an outcome of effective social emotional learning, that they are not the same and they should not be necessarily coordinated together.
Yeah. All right. But I wanted to just want people to know that we, it's, it's something we're working on as a whole system and, and for the adults too. So and H R is working with us on that. So we're doing that work with adults, with our students. So it's student to student, adults to student and adults to adults.
All right. Any questions for asking? Do you want to move on to, uh, the book? All right. Uh, I, one thing we did, I will have, um, I, I want to sure direct them on this. So go ahead, Principal Ner.
Hi. Um, so mine will kind of be a combination of what you've already heard. Brett kind of touched on some of my pieces and Tanisha really hit hard on, um, one of my major pieces as well. Um, going into the new school year, just building off of, um, belong partners and what Tanisha was speaking on. Um, a big part of what we worked on last year was social emotional learning, not just for students, but also for the adults. And a big part of that was we just needed to build a foundational base of getting everybody to get back into the groove of being in school. And then how do we resolve issues as they arise in a productive manner? And we managed to do a really good job from the beginning of the year, looking at the data from the beginning of our year. With referrals and looking at, you know, having almost twenty something referrals, almost close to thirty in October. And having almost less than ten by the time we got to June and checking in with students. A big part of what we did was just having those conversations of, you know, how are you doing? How are you doing on the mood meter? You know, what are you feeling? What are the expectations? And students were able to regurgitate that. And a lot of that happened because of just conversations between the students and me, conversations between the teachers and the students. And just overall, we really built our foundational base for social emotional learning. And some of that was giving ownership. To our, um, education support staff because there was a big, um, gap between how the students treat their. Teachers and me and the office staff and how the students treat the educational support staff. And some of the, you know, behaviors outside of the classroom were leaking into the classroom, which was now impacting learning in the classroom. And by the time we got to June, we saw a big shift. And just students being calmer, students listening more, students engaging. And even in doing wrong or what we perceive as wrong. We were able to have more productive conversations of, oh, I saw that you did, you did that, what's going on? And oh, I shouldn't have done that. I know I shouldn't have done this. Or just having those conversations where we move away from punitive measurements. To, um, restorative practice based conversations of, yes, I did this wrong. And students were able to come up with their own consequences to right now, just, we don't have all the data and everything, but just seeing the environment of students coming back in. And staff coming back into the building, you can see that some of that work carried on. And at the beginning of the year, where we had a lot of, you know, explosive behaviors. And a lot of, you know, things going on in September, just right off the bat, this year it's a little bit different and you can feel the work from last year kind of transitioning into this year. And you can see even students that might be struggling a little bit here and there can still have those same conversations with you. You know, here's where I am on the mood meter or, you know, earlier I had a conversation about a student who, you know, was disrespectful to adults. But his response, where in the past it would have been, he would have lied and he would have, you know, done all of this. And then eventually came out and said it. He was like, you know what? It was my fault. I shouldn't have said that to her and that's why she got mad at me. And we have a plan in place for, you know, what's gonna happen. So belong partners, where they're gonna come in for us is they're going to build up our, um, education support staff. They're going to give them professional development on how to work with students on respond, um. Sorry, it was story of practice. And we're also gonna have them work with the teachers as well, so that we're all kind of on the same page. And building off of that, um, the race and equity piece that we're gonna work on this year. Um, a lot of my goals, sorry if I kind of walked backwards a little bit. A lot of my goals, we looked as a staff at the end of last year and we looked at our goals and we made amazing growth. So one thing we talked about is we don't wanna necessarily, necessarily start fresh the new year. But what worked for us this year and what, you know, do we need to continue to build on the following year? So we decided to stay within the same umbrella of goals because even though we grew. We still need more growth within those areas. So rather than starting fresh and choosing. To isolate a new location and focus on, our goal for the following year was we're gonna keep the same, you know, reading comprehension. Within literacy, we're gonna keep numbers in operation within math. Um, we're gonna keep to our social emotional needs. And we're going to keep to addressing our adult biases within the race and equity. And we're just going to build by. Leaving the foundation, we set the foundation last year. We did a lot of the, you know, underground work. We did a lot of. You know, hard work. We did a lot of heart work. We did a lot of emotions. We did all of that. And we were able to identify at the very end, okay, this is moving, the needle is moving in a certain direction. But now we kind of need to put some practicality be, behind some of the actions that we are going to take. And just right off the bat, on, you know, the first day when we met our kickoff, I could see a lot of. Passion from staff. I could see a lot of motivation and drive. And even in reassessing the goals and having a conversation about, you know. The growth that we wanna make, we had those conversations about, you know, even within our academic goals, how can we, you know. Talk about race and equity or social emotional needs, even within our academic goals and see if there's a way for us to. Not just blanket all of our goals, but kind of infuse them in a way that would benefit all of our students and not just, you know, every student is able to grow by this percentage. Um, a big one that we're really excited about, and I think a part of the way we're going to achieve this year is our committees look a little different this year. In that they are not just meeting to meet. But they're meeting to kind of be professional development based. And that's what we're going to utilize our staff meetings. And I know they're not called Smart Wednesdays, but I don't remember off the top of my mind, but they're called either.
What are they called, Erin?
Early release for professional development.
Okay.
Okay. I like Smart Wednesdays, but, um. Um, what we're gonna do with our committees is especially the race and equity committee, our leadership team committee, um. We have a P B I S slash S C L committee and a couple of other committees that integrate right into our goals. But rather than leave our goals to be something that we check in, in the middle or the end of the year, my hope and my aspiration for this year is our committees will give practical strategies. Um, practical professional development that are from the teachers, for the teachers. That way we're not just, you know, having these conversations, but in every single. Um, whether it's a smart Wednesday or whether it's a staff meeting, we can walk away with professional development. And we started off on the kickoff where we had, um, a language acquisition, just refresher. We had a one hour training on the different stages of language acquisition and just understanding that, you know, students come in differently at the beginning of the year and their language. A lot of them come in with zero language, but it doesn't mean that they're not learning, they're learning and they're engaging, but we just don't see it the way that they perceive it. And that ended up being a really beneficial professional development because we actually ended up with a lot of new, um, students who just came into the country with no language. And it was a good refresher to have. And then just, um, also using as an analysis tool. We did our M T S S comprehensive needs assessment and that team really was motivated and driven and they were willing to come in. A few times during the summer, just to plan on some of our focus areas for the year. And some of those focus areas, based on all of our goals, is really, we identified a big need for this year being strategies, practical strategies, whether it's. For race and equity, whether it's for reading, whether it's for math, but we need practical strategies that we are all implementing. Um, another thing we identified is we need a scope and sequence. Um, for both math and reading. Unfortunately, math is kind of going through a lot of development right now with all the different, um. Math pilots that we're trying, but we all agree that with literacy, you know, although we have a lot of different curriculums that we utilize. We can all base a lot of what we're doing on the common core standards. So what that team did is they put together a format for the scoping sequence. And then based off of that format, we started by creating the September scope and sequence for every single grade. And once we created that September scope and sequence, we presented it to the team. And then the team has the ability to switch and change standards based on what they are teaching. But what that creates for the entire grade, right off the jump, is some kind of alignment. Within each grade level, which then would make the data protocol and the P L Cs a little bit more accessible. And a little bit more connected to the goals because now we're not all teaching in silos. We're all teaching within the same standard base at every grade level. We all have a common assessment and we're able to unpack that common assessment and then just try to find out what do we need to work towards. Um, in, you know, benefiting our students. And a part of that is also being open. And we've had these kind of conversations about how we address data. And what it really looks like to look at, you know, your grade level and say, you know, these students are not moving. What can we do at the grade level to make them go from point A to point B? And that's an okay conversation to have because ultimately we're working towards growth. And, duh, 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 I'm sorry, I feel like I'm talking faster than I should. Um, a big part of our goal, again, like I said, is professional development. And through the C S I P, when we completed it, um, we connected with people. Um, that would be willing to come in and just really focus on, again, differentiation, um, balanced literacy. And just P L C work and making sure that we're all actually engaging from one area to the next, rather than kind of being, um. Mixed up in, we can't do this and we can't do that. And so far, it's, it's, it's a positive. I think Brett said it earlier. Really, I feel like what made it. A really positive start to the year was just the conversations that we had at the kickoff and just hearing, you know, that. Admin was willing to support the schools and this, it just feels a lot more inviting and a lot of people feel motivated and driven. And it's going to be a lot of work, but like I said, we set the foundation last year and our race and equity goal, I don't think that'll be. As simple as it sounds, but I'm thankful that, you know, we started that process and some of the new staff that came in, they're going to also take the Harvard, um, implicit bias test. And we're going to add them to the scores that we already have. And, um, if I didn't finish saying it earlier, our race and equity team and some of our other teams are going to take the data. And they're going to, during their committee meetings, come up with, you know, they'll desegregate the data, they'll come up with plans and ideas, and then they'll come and present to the staff. So that's the whole elementary in a bow.
Any questions? But I wanna make sure Director Morris too, uh, if she has any question. Any question?
Um, I, I feel.
Comment.
For the goals, we could help for specifically reading and emotional. We could help, we could achieve those by implementing more like extracurricular things outside of classic. For example, that's the work for this reading program called Team Read, which focuses on one-on-one tutoring. Which is something they can really get in class because like teachers have thirty other students, so like it's more beneficial for them. Like as like an extra support and regarding emotional. I took a elementary school as part of a program called mindful mentors, which help. Um, with their emotional intelligence and be more intentional with their actions, which I feel like can also help their academics too, which is like. is like university beneficial to like all of the, so, all of the subjects they're learning in school. And can also help like what, what you were saying before, like respects, be more intentional with how each other is.
Yeah, I, I think you bring up a good point, right? That in school, door, the education continues, right? And so how do we maximize the extra time, after-school time, all of those pieces? Um, I know Showalter has a before, after, after-school programming, right? And then we have, uh, they have before, after school as well and some of these partners as well, which are critical. So always thinking about the extended time. Thank you for that, honey. Anybody else?
Yeah, the other thing on the extracurricular, I think last year, we had kind of a flood of all kinds of opportunities.
Yes.
And I don't think, uh, we need to do a little better job of scheduling so that students can maximize, you know, they can spend as many of the best possible, rather than, uh.
We're actually having a conversation about actually the alignment around that work too. And the other thing I would say as a parent, it's really confusing when there's too many things going on in the school. Um, it, we, sometimes, you know, it's like when you go to the grocery store and the mega stores versus, you know, it, it, we want, we want to make things, we want to make sure that whatever we offer, that it's all aligned to the values of the work. So, you know, the arts and, you know, all of these pieces, field experiences and academics, like it's all going together, so we're, we're talking about that as well. Go ahead, uh, Director Hoover.
Um, yeah, I just, um, I started, I remember thinking this last time, um, when you presented your, on your panel last year about just, um, really, really appreciating your intentionality around the hard work with the staff. Um, and I, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for race and equity goals. I, I would love to see that in, in every single of school programs, where we're literally targeted like that. And the reality is, is, you know, I think a lot of our goals are focused on students, whereas a lot of the outcomes of students is a result of how we teach, how we, how we interact, right? How we teach, how we interact. Um, and I think specifically around, you know, we could, we could talk every day and do so much more about addressing adult bias and we're still not going to do it all, right? So I think that's something, that is just one example of, we need to be doing that more and more and more, really being okay. Um, acknowledging, right? I think that's, you know, the first step. We, I have a bias, right? I have them, um, I can't be free of them, that's how our brains work. Um, but it is about how we can disrupt, um, be aware of and then disrupt the, uh, negative actions that may come as a result of our biases. So I just want to say I appreciate your intentionality and our understanding that, um, we have so much work to do as adults in the spaces um, that really then will lead to our young people having better outcomes, because it's often the adults that get in the way of that. So I just want to thank you.
And I just want to add to that, and this is where my little learning piece, not only addressing biases, but understanding, and there's a lot of research around this, that under times of stress, fatigue, hunger and just, uh, overwhelmingness and not being, and all of those stressors, that we actually revert back to our biases in those critical decisions. And if we can think about the school day, right? Think about the students, right? All the times where you've been stressed, exhausted, you know, all those times. And our teachers too, especially around discipline, right? So we have to acknowledge that, yes, we all have biases and we're working on it actively and they get triggered when we're in very stressful situations. And so we have to acknowledge that. That's why the work in the partnership with belong partners is going to be really critical, because we have to keep working on it and then also have strategies on how to deal with this when we as adults aren't in our best place to deal with that, right? And I'm not just being like an evaluation, a bullshit, certain things cause people stress, just in general. So we have to acknowledge that, that there is bias and that we are not our best selves or not when we're in all those conditions. So just wanted to put that out there too, that it's not, it's about that and the other pieces as well. Um, I wanted to call out one thing here, and I know there's more, MTSS. Um, MTSS is called multi-tiered systems of support. It's a framework for, it's about a framework for how we, uh, instruct students. So it's, there's tier one, there's tier two, tier three, tier one is basically more instruction. And that's what every student should be getting. And I will say that our MTSS system here is different. It's not really something that we have fully had in place in ToCo. It is something that we're going to work on. Um, and it's one of our goals, we had it as a goal, but we took it off because we felt we didn't have it fully aligned in our system yet. But our goal is that by the end of the year, that we actually have a strategic plan goal around building around MTSS. Go ahead, Dr. Morris.
It just looks, I think, uh, Dr. Morris has a question.
Oh, Dr. Morris has a question, go ahead, Dr. Morris, thank you.
I, I would just like to, um, commend the, the principals who have focused on reinforcing things that they started last year and not giving the staff something new to focus on, but to refine those situations. So thank you. I'm hearing positive things from the staffs for doing that, so thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you, Dr. Morris. Um, we've got, we have two minutes left. Are there any last comments from anyone here regarding, I think with that will conclude. I'm only going to share with OSPI is here and they're going to be supporting our team, as you know, we have some, we were due. About all I've been able to share, are there any final comments or, 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 or work, or comments about, or questions about this work?
Would we be getting similar presentations from Foster and?
Yes. Yeah, so what we're going to do at the, the next one, so we, uh, October, we're going to be pulling out the relationships one. And actually Foster and Thorndyke will be presenting that. I wanted to make sure for this round that we had a secondary and elementary one. So you, and, oh, maybe you can meet with your new principal and talk about student voice within that too. I would highly encourage it, especially since you'll be here, but the October work session will be focused on that and it'll be Foster and Thorndyke here, okay?
Just want to say thank you so much for being here, Mr. Cooper, Dr. Evans said, and Miss Thor, um, and everybody else, um, for us to be so valuable and forever that, um, that you all are kicking in. They officially end the meeting.
Oh, yeah. All right, well, oh, you.
Well, I, well, I've spent in a lot of board meetings and a lot of opportunities and I just want to just acknowledge you coming here with active participation in this and I just took the joy and refreshing, thank you.
All right, well, uh, four fifty-eight, oh, just kidding, just kidding. Oh, oh, I forgot about public comment, oh, thank you so much. Okay, so just to name, what's typically work sessions wouldn't have a public comment, but we thought it was really important to provide one because we are only having one regular board meeting per month. And also, um, we wouldn't provide as much opportunity for people to give a public comment as possible, particularly as we've been engaging in conversation. Um, so, um, with that, are there any, um, interest in getting a public comment? Um, my guess is probably not, seeing as no one's here. But I still got to call it, public comment. Seeing that, I'm going to return our meeting. Okay, oh, in favor. Thank you. Thanks so much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, again.
Nice to meet you.